Good evening and welcome to the September 24, 2018 Joint Work Session of the Mayor and City Council and Planning Commission. Tonight, we have one discussion item. Before we start, I just want to take a minute to thank my colleagues, particularly Council Vice President Spiegel, for stepping up last week when, due to a back injury, I couldn't make it here to our meeting. And I really appreciate the good job everybody did. So with that, we have one discussion topic that is short-term rentals. And I'm going to let Rob Robinson and Kevin Roman take it away.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council and Planning Commissioners. Tonight, Rob and I are here to discuss short-term rentals. As the city, as well as many other local jurisdictions and cities all over the world, are now challenged with determining how to handle this insanely popular home-sharing phenomenon. The presence of short-term rentals appears to influence five key areas that we need to keep under consideration. That's including housing availability, neighborhood preservation, quality of life, safety, and economic development. Short-term rentals have the potential to add both positive and negative consequences on our city. And therefore, we need to find a balance of reasonable, and most importantly, enforceable regulations that will mitigate any negative side effects. With that, we'll go ahead and begin. What is a short-term rental? Generally, a short-term rental has been defined as renting out a residential dwelling unit for periods of less than 30 days. The type of dwelling could be a furnished home, an apartment, a condominium, or a habitable room within each housing type. Properties are typically rented on a weekly or nightly basis depending on need. This slide indicates a property owner, but most of the ordinances that we've reviewed indicate either the property owner or an owner-authorized resident, meaning a tenant could potentially sublet the unit as a short-term rental with the property owner's permission. Long-term rentals, on the other hand, are rented for periods greater than 30 days, but typically leases are assigned for six months or longer. Currently, our zoning ordinance allows similar existing uses such as boarded and rooming houses, bed and breakfasts, hotels, et cetera. These uses would need to be distinguished separately from short-term rentals. Moving on. This slide is a snapshot of the city, and it shows that we have approximately 26,000 dwelling units. And on August 31 of this year, 51 short-term rentals were listed on four different platforms. And that was just on that one day. We really don't know how many short-term rentals we have here in the city of Gaithersburg. My understanding, there are 125 different platforms now offering short-term rentals. So we don't have, really have a good gauge of how many we have currently. But a recent article in the Frederick Post indicated that one of the major players, Airbnb, hosted, Airbnb hosts in Gaithersburg entertained about 3,000 guests in 2017. So it's definitely being used. Regarding complaints, we've only received a handful of complaints, about a half dozen of them, regarding the short-term rentals. A few of the complaints express quality-of-life concerns, including parking and noise. And other concerns are just with transient guests coming in and out of the neighborhood. Moving on. I think Rob's going to take this slide.
Sure. So rental regulations, as the last slide showed, these are occurring, and they have been occurring. How different jurisdictions are handling it is sort of here. Here in the city of Gaithersburg, it's sort of unique. And as was sort of discussed on the cover sheet, our zoning ordinance for a number of zones has, as a by right accessory use, the renting of two rooms, I mean, the renting of rooms to no more than two individuals. So this falls under that. We have other zones that don't have that, so it's prohibited. So really, in the city of Gaithersburg, it's not specifically allowed, and it's not regulated. And it's not allowed in other zones, but it's really murky and gray. The city of Rockville, speaking to them, have a lot of the same language in their zoning ordinance, and they're viewing them as allowed. And right now, they don't have any desire to regulate them. The city of Frederick, similar language. They have a zoning opinion that says they're allowed. And right now, they're not regulated, but they're currently studying regulations. There has been sort of an outcry, sort of what Kevin had mentioned, a lot of the residential neighborhoods don't like it. The city of Annapolis allowed it through license by legislation in 2016. Ordinance change. They didn't really deal with it with zoning. But again, Annapolis is a unique situation, you know, being head of the state, the Naval Academy, Boat Week, things like that. And in fact, their license waives the regulations the weekend of the Naval Academy graduation. Montgomery County changed their ordinance in 2017 and their regulations to allow these. And this was following a year and a half work that they did, including public outreach. So as you can see, going through, there's a lot of stuff going on. There's antiquated zoning language. There's some that just feel this is something that's occurring. And then there's other jurisdictions that want to try to get out in front of it. Turn this back over to Kevin to discuss more in detail the Montgomery County ordinance.
As Rob mentioned, Montgomery County recently enacted legislation that allows short-term rentals and provides for certain standards to be complied with by the hosts. The ordinance took effect on July 1, and I'll go over a few of the highlights listed here. Like most other jurisdictions, the county defines short-term rentals as rentals for less than 30 consecutive days. The housing type can be single-family, condominium, or apartment. No accessory apartments or farm tenant dwellings can be rented as a short-term rental. Hosts must be either the property owner or the owner's authorized resident and use the property as their primary residence. A license must be obtained and renewed annually at the cost of $150. The license holder must pay room rental tax, room rental transient tax, and the HOA and certain neighbors must be notified. Additionally, a license will not be issued if prohibited by a homeowners association, a condominium document, or a rental lease. Continuing. One off-street parking space is required to be provided unless advertised, the advertised listing specifically states that vehicles are not allowed. In the event that the owner is off-site, the property can be rented for a maximum of 120 days. I don't know how they're going to enforce that. That really seems to be a problem there on the enforcement angle.
Kevin, do you mind if I interrupt your question? Do you have any sense of what the purpose of the 120-day max is?
I don't know. Most jurisdictions that I've reviewed keep it at 90. And I think that's for long-term vacations, maybe if, you know, the snowbird's going down to Florida for a while. But I don't have an exact answer for that.
So it's 120 days over 365 days?
That's correct.
It doesn't have to be consecutive?
It doesn't have to be consecutive, as long as the owner is not present. When the primary resident is not present, a designated representative that resides within 15 miles of the unit must be available to respond to any emergencies. In the event that the owner or authorized resident is on-site, being a hosted rental, there is no limit, so they could do it 365 days. Overnight guests are limited to six adults, and the total number of guests over 18 per bedroom is limited to two. A record of all overnight guests must be maintained and made available upon inspection. If we move forward to permitting short-term rentals, the following are a few questions that will need to be answered. What are the appropriate zoning districts? And do we need to establish density limits for the number of short-term rentals allowed in each zone? What will our definition of short-term rental be? And will they be allowed in all types of housing, single-family condo and multifamily apartments? Will we allow rental of the entire house or only room rentals? And how long would a guest be able to stay? Will we require an owner or authorized resident to be present when hosting or allowed unhosted rentals? How will we protect affordable housing units? And how will we ensure the rentals comply with life safety codes and protections on over occupancy? Will we require inspections or allow self-certifications? With that?
So the purpose of tonight's work session, you know, is just to give you this overview. And in many ways, there's not much more to discuss. So really, this evening, staff is seeking guidance on a number of points. And the first main point, as shown on the first bullet, is the desire of council and the planning commission, whether it's to sort of remain as things are and allow these under the zones that they're allowed, prohibited in the zones they're prohibited, and have them remain unregulated? Or should we explore a text amendment to do one of two things, either better define, clean up some of our definitions, and actually regulate these uses? Or to clearly prohibit throughout the city these uses? And I think that's the main overriding one that we're seeking guidance on. Going under the assumption that we're going to better define and regulate, we're going to be seeking guidance on whether or not to use the county ordinance as a model for standards. This is the tact Frederick City is doing right now. They're using Montgomery County's ordinance as sort of the framework. As Kevin mentioned, we want to know whether, do we want to allow these in all zones with residential uses or limit to specific zones? As Kevin mentioned, homeowners association, condo associations, lease agreements on multifamily, these can preclude these. All we're discussing this evening is zoning ordinance. Those documents, you know, can self-regulate. So just because we allow it by zone, if an HOA says we don't want these, they're not going to occur. An example is, you know, while we allow home-based businesses, the Crown and their HOA documents allows no home-based businesses. The one issue, though, is in some of the neighborhoods where we've seen these, there is no HOA. So they truly rely upon zoning. So that's sort of where that question is derived from. For Kevin and myself in our discussions, we want to seek guidance on whether to limit these only to single-family or condominium or include a multifamily rental. And we have some concerns about multifamily rental these occurring because that really is, you know, subletting an apartment. There's no ownership per se, there's no stake in that property. So it becomes a bit of a concern. And it opens up the door in some of the larger cities where you're seeing older apartment complexes being bought by third parties to sort of turn them into de facto, you know, hotels. And in fact, in doing some of the research on those four sites that we did for August 31, there are some third-party leasing of the Bezuto product and Crown over here in Archstone. So there are some apartments already that are being leased by firms that are actively marketing these as short-term rentals. We're also seeking guidance following up on that. Whether the property owners, whether the desire of council is to have the property owners present or will we allow them to have, you know, essentially their agents, you know, a leasing from an owner, allow these to be rent, or to have these rented while nobody's on-premise? As was just sort of brought up by the mayor with 120, we're looking for some guidance that if we move forward with something, do we want to do some limits on the rentals? You know, no more than 30 consecutive days or 90 days total? Or do we want to follow the county model that if the owner's present, you know, these can be rented unlimited throughout the year? We'd like, if we move forward with some sort of text amendment, while it is written a lot of times in the offering agreements for our affordable housing program, we'd like to clearly state that designated, you know, MPDUs and workforce housing, these are not eligible. You can't do those in houses that are governed by our affordable housing program. As was mentioned, do we wish to continue to limit the number of total renters to two adults per bedroom? And as often found with many of the neighborhoods and many of the discussions we have, a lot of plans, parking's always an issue. So do we want to require one, you know, like follow the county model and require one dedicated off-street parking space? Do we wish to require more? Do we wish to require none? And lastly, obviously, with this, the bureaucratic standpoint of this, should we do this text amendment? Would we want to create, you know, a new license sort of following the Annapolis model where these are governed under a separate license than, say, maybe your typical rental housing license or your home-based business license? And this is an opportunity where we could add additional life safety requirements and other standards that really necessarily aren't necessarily appropriate for a zoning ordinance change. But we'd want to ensure public safety. So those are really the points and topics we're seeking guidance on. And Kevin and I would be happy to answer any questions to the best of our ability, depending upon what they are.
Great. Thank you guys for the presentation, for the research that's gone into it. I'm going to start off with a question, but then I have a few comments. If we do go with some sort of licensing requirement, I realize that there are 125 or who knows how many infinite number of sites where they host listings for short-term rentals. But if we were to stick with, if we were just to focus on our efforts on Airbnb, do we know if Airbnb would cooperate with the city in licensing? And at least notifying the, anybody who wants to list a room or some sort of unit for short-term rental, that they would have to get a license from the city?
My understanding is that they will not share data readily with cities. Some of the bigger cities have negotiated, New Orleans and San Francisco have negotiated with Airbnb to get that information. But it's definitely a conversation we can have.
I think the mayor's asking a slightly different question, which is, would a platform provider push out information to those who want to go onto their platform and rent a property?
That a license is required.
And say, hey, by the way, you need to make sure you're compliant with whatever the rules and regulations. I'm sure, I'm sure there's some generic language already in the terms of use that says it's up to you, property owner, to do this.
That's correct.
Without necessarily calling out the specific regulations of any jurisdiction. But I don't know. I mean, I guess that's what you're asking that could...
Right, that's what I was asking, but I'm interested in what you were answering, too.
But they would continue to allow them to operate. They would not remove them from the listing. That's my understanding.
So this came up at the National League of Cities three years ago. And I think I came back from that meeting and talked about the issue. This is part of the sharing economy. We have representatives from the Airbnb talking at the meeting and, you know, speaking at the meeting. And I specifically asked this issue about sharing information about rentals within a municipality. And they didn't, they weren't, they didn't seem very receptive to any of that. And I wasn't the only person asking those questions from a municipality of all sizes. So they're not very forthcoming in terms of cooperating with municipalities. And I think, you know, it's going to take some other kind of deal to get some response from them. And, you know, if you don't get it from Airbnb, you're not going to get it from anybody else. You know, given the four platforms you talked about, there's multiple, there's many more beyond that, so.
So getting to sort of the policy questions, I do think it's in our interest to better define and regulate. I don't, I don't want to see us necessarily outlaw short-term rentals. I think it'd be kind of a losing battle to even try to outlaw it. I do agree with staff's concern, which I'm glad you brought it up because it wouldn't have occurred to me right off the bat about MPDUs and workforce units. We want to make sure that people aren't buying these as investment properties. We're really trying to solve a problem here. And so, and then when it comes to how many days or requirements about people being on the premises. Yeah, I think if you're on the premises and want to rent out a room, you should be able to do it within a certain, you know, perhaps... I'm going to leave it up to staff and to our legal staff to negotiate what, or navigate us through the subletting rules. And, you know, we don't want to invalidate leases on every apartment in the city right off the bat. But, you know, I think it's important, if somebody, particularly for property owners, it's important for them to be able to have the freedom to do with an extra room, what they want to do.
They can already do that, though, within our ordinances. They can already rent a room to somebody for a period of time. So, you know, that doesn't prevent that. This is the issue of trans latency and people who aren't there, you know, actually becoming part of that particular household for a period of time. And I think that's the difference here when we're talking about short-term rentals versus somebody who's got a room to rent and they have somebody reside there for a period of time over a six-month period or a year or even longer. Because then they become better known to the neighborhood. And I think the neighbors are less resistant, that kind of thing. This is a different issue.
So to be clear, you're saying that somebody...
I'm saying we already allow this to some extent. What we're talking about now is short-term rentals. And, you know, we have to distinguish between those two things.
Yeah. But are you saying we should, we should continue to allow short-term rentals?
I haven't got to my question yet, but I think we should, you know, we already allow people to rent rooms for a period of time.
Oh, I get that.
What we're dealing with is short-term rentals.
I'm trying to get to what your position is.
I have a lot of questions about short-term rentals. And so, you know, if you're done, I'll ask my questions, but otherwise, I'll let you continue.
I am done, actually. Please, go ahead.
All right. So first of all, how many of our HOAs allow short-term rentals in their...
I don't have that answer, but I know that a couple, when I sent the email notifying of the work session, a couple of HOAs wrote back or the board of directors wrote back and said that they are prohibited by their HOA documents. And they were actually pushing the city to prohibit them. And that's, again, there's only a handful of them. We have over 90 associations, but a few of them did write back, say that they were not interested in the city allowing short-term rentals.
So would there, the HOA rule would supersede what we do in any event?
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So how about multifamily rental developments? Are there any that we know are allowing this, sublets, that kind of stuff?
I'm not aware of...
Short-term sublets.
Well, through the research, yes. I mean, we know that it is occurring in non-ownership multifamily, you know, buildings.
Okay, so...
But we don't know specifically if the apartment complexes are allowing it.
So the owner of the apartment complex can, they can put that in a lease agreement to prohibit that, right? Just like they could for a sublet?
Yes.
Okay. Of the 51 sites, I went back and looked at this slide, you have 51 sites. Are any of them zones where this type of rental is prohibited?
Yes, if you could bear with me one second. So this morning, I decided to do some more digging based upon the zones. So on the screen right now is the 51. The areas in yellow are the zones that have residential use, that have residential and are allowing them. The blue are zones that do not have that accessory use language, allowing the rental, so they're precluded. So you can see, these are occurring in zones where, you know, potentially it is not allowed or is currently not allowed.
I've seen there be zones where there's townhouses and condos largely, more than single-family?
The northern section, the R18 properties, those are towns.
Yeah. And then finally, you know, we worked with the state and with other municipalities, MML, to get a hotel tax passed. We worked real hard with that. I think we've realized significant revenue from that. Out of 3,000 people that rented in 2017, do we know, do we have an idea what that loss would be in terms of revenue if they had to pay the hotel tax, what that would be?
I don't have that number, but I do know that the hotel tax is applicable to units with, with buildings with more than 10 units. So would not apply currently to the short-term rentals. And that's something that would need to be amended as well.
Okay. May I jump in on that one? Because we discussed this whole issue with the Economic Development Committee meeting on Friday morning. And there was a little bit of arithmetic done, and you could end around this prohibition of charging tax and making it a level playing field with hotels by charging $100 a year license fee.
Right.
So basically, you would balance out if that, if revenue is one of the issues that we'd be considering.
Ryan, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll come back.
Okay. I'm sorry. I have a bunch of stuff, and I thought it made more sense to wait and kind of go through it all than respond to everybody else's points, but I think there's a lot of important points. I was going to bring up the hotel tax as well. Our Economic Development Office and I actually recently met with the head of the county's Tourism and Conference Bureau, is that the title of your...
Visit Montgomery.
Visit Montgomery, who is here tonight. Thank you for being here, appreciate it. Hopefully, we'll hear from you when we have comments from the public. And we kind of started to break down this issue of the hotel and motel tax as it applies under state law and what the county's authority is and what the city's authority is. It's a little, it's a little grayer, it turns out, than we originally thought. The county is authorized to apply its hotel tax to short-term rentals. The city, as it turns out, is not because the state law that empowers municipalities to collect hotel tax has this provision, as you mentioned, which says it only applies to facilities that have more than 10 units. And there's, it's a little complicated how the history of that clause got into that state legislation. And I'm actually going to suggest that our intergovernmental relations staff work together with the Maryland Municipal League and other interested parties to see if we can encourage our state legislature to revisit that clause in the enabling legislation at the state level that empowers municipalities to collect hotel tax. Because I think there's an issue with equity, if the county can do it, but the cities can't. But, so I just wanted to raise that point. And my understanding from our discussions with the Visit Montgomery team is that some of the larger short-term rental platforms, like Airbnb, have made arrangements with the county where they're not necessarily sharing data, but they're ensuring the collection of hotel tax and the delivery of that tax to the county. So the issue with replacing that model with a license fee is that it shifts it on to the property owner, probably, to be the one responsible to actually go and apply for the license and pay us versus having a larger entity, an organized platform, that might be able to collect that fee individually each time and deliver it to us. Might be, might be more accountable, might be easier to enforce, maybe, not sure.
Assuming state law change first.
Assuming we could get state law change. So that's a potential problem with doing it as a license fee. But I think it's an interesting alternative to consider. And then in follow-up to a comment that Mike made about how many HOAs allow these short-term rentals, I just kind of wanted to sort of shift our perspective on the discussion there because it's one thing to say that an HOA allows it, it's another to say that they don't necessarily prohibit it. I think the situation is probably that most HOAs that don't have a clause in their documents prohibiting it, it's not necessarily because they have made a conscious choice to allow it. It's just that they haven't gotten around to it or haven't contemplated it yet. I think the marketplace here is evolving so rapidly in the last several years that, you know, all of our institutions just haven't kept up, which is the reason why we're having this work session tonight. So I think we sort of need to keep that in mind. And there may need to be an educational component here in terms of, you know, city outreach. We don't necessarily know yet whether we want to advocate one way or another to condo associations and HOAs. But, you know, for those that don't know about this issue, there might need to be an education component there as they consider what to do for themselves. I think whatever we do on this front, enforcement's going to be an issue. It's extremely difficult with 120 or whatever platforms out there doing this sort of thing. You know, we certainly don't have the resources to go around and ensure that everybody who's doing this or advertising a room or a residential unit is purchasing a license or paying a tax or whatever it is we decide we want to do or complying with any other sort of regulatory requirements that we might impose. So I think we need to think carefully about that. It doesn't mean we shouldn't have some sort of regulatory system in place. It just means we need to be aware that whatever system we put in place is going to be difficult to enforce. And probably, a lot of it is going to be based on, you know, trust or the fear of a complaint, which, you know, we have many regulations that are based on, you know, complaint-based for enforcement purposes. So it could work. I agree with the mayor that, you know, look, we can't prohibit these outright. That's unrealistic. We can't ignore the issue and just say, we're not going to do anything and, you know, we'll just keep going like we're going. Because I think that's not the, not really the most responsible approach to what's happening. So to me, it's about a balance of how we protect neighborhoods, how we have reasonable regulation of safety and other concerns without stifling the innovation in the marketplace that's obviously happening here. I do think we need to make sure we're thinking about how we avoid these sort of permanent short-term rental factories that are popping up in certain places. And, you know, this idea that just because someone is resident in their property and they're renting out a room, they should be allowed to do whatever they want with it, you know, for 365 days of the year, does concern me. Because, you know, even if it's a different person every week coming in to rent that room, you know, there's an impact on the neighborhood to give someone that broad authority to do that. And just because they happen to, you know, be living in the property and, you know, have some ability to sort of oversee what's going on directly, that doesn't negate some of the other potentially negative impacts of having, you know, just a constant sort of revolving door of people coming in and out. I think the MPDU question is a no-brainer. I mean, I think, you know, I'll let my colleagues speak for themselves, but I think if, you know, the whole point of the MPDU program is going to be undermined if we don't have a clear directive to the participants in that program that they can't rent out the properties. And so those are my initial reactions to some of the points raised by staff in the presentation. I will follow up with the other stakeholders on... I will follow up with the other stakeholders on the issue of the state legislation because I do think that it's important that we see if we can remove that clause. Because I, I frankly think if large players like Airbnb are willing to turn over hotel tax, uh, revenue to the county, they probably would be willing to collect it and turn it over to the city. And we're leaving that money on the table if we don't have the authority to collect it.
Maureen.
Thank you, sir. So I actually just stayed in an Airbnb in Florida this weekend, so I'm really curious about how, uh, we will go about regulating, um, these in the city. I am curious, I know you, you didn't expound on why the, uh, MPDUs were singled out. Is that all rentals are not going to be able to have the Airbnb? Or is it just the MPDUs because they're subsidized by the city?
That was the question that we were seeking guidance on because, you know, delineated affordable housing units, be they workforce or MPDUs. And while there is some language already in the offering agreements that sort of precludes it, we just wanted to make sure it was clear upfront because from, from Kevin's and mine, in our discussions, that was our concern. As new, um, housing comes online here, most of them, you know, if it's multifamily, is going to have fifteen percent affordable, affordable units, you know, MPDUs. And we would just prefer, just in general, that it was clear to everyone that this is not an option. That is not the intent of our Affordable Housing Program, um, to allow these to be sublet out. Again, sort of the question that I'm hearing from the council is, you know, apartments are owned by someone and there's a property manager, but they're not always on site, so really, what, what is the intent of apartments? You know, is it, is it to become de facto hotels? And, and we don't believe so, so.
So would, is Montgomery County prohibiting MPDs and workforce housing in their ordinance?
Yeah, I believe it's specifically, um, prohibited in the affordable housing.
So we have affordable housing applies to rental properties as well as owner-occupied. And I think, you know, uh, like Ryan, I think it's a no-brainer to include prohibitions on, for, for both owner-occupied and rental. I mean, there's a, you know, we're already dealing with a shortage. We're not creating enough affordable housing as it is. And if you lose any of this to, you know, transient rentals, then, then it becomes a greater problem.
Well, it's the same reason why we have regulations that prohibit people from getting an MPDU and then flipping it for a profit in the short term. It's the exact same, you know, idea is that, you know, we don't want these units to be, um, you know, leveraged inappropriately for people to make, you know, make a buck when it's really, they're supposed to be there for people who needed to have an affordable place to live.
Maureen, was that all you had or do you have more?
I don't see the language in the ordinance, so I don't know in the counties.
Again, I, I've, preparing for this work session, I've reviewed many different or, uh, ordinances. They may not specifically express it, but I'll, I'll take a look and double-check.
And then the county, do they charge, uh, for a license or a permit?
Yeah, it's a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
And does it matter if it's a single family or a house, or it's just?
It could be either housing type, any housing type, an apartment, condo, or a single family.
And do they talk about how they regulate it or how they?
It's all self-certification right now.
And I saw that there six complaints have been filed, where they?
To the city of Gathersburg, yes. And just regarding quality of life issues, noise, um, parking issues, and then just the transient guests going in and out of the neighborhood.
Now, was this in a certain part of the neighborhood or is this just all around the city that these calls came from? Or six individual properties?
They were different, different homeowners' associations.
Okay.
One quick question, it's kind of a follow-up to, to the sales. One of the, um, organizations that I'm a part of, something came up with, with, um, areas that have lots of rentals or lots of, um, transit homes. Was there any, um, ordinance that you, uh, investigated where they prohibited like parties? Because, you know, folk, they were seeing a predominance of individuals renting homes, larger homes. They had really nice amenities like hot tubs and pools, and they were using them as, as party houses.
Yes, absolutely. Um, and Montgomery County does. They, they'll limit the overnight guests to six.
Well, even if it's not overnight, people will just come for the party.
And there are no, um, I believe it states that there are no, uh, if you're not a registered guest, you're not allowed on the property.
So there would be a limit, so you couldn't have?
That's correct.
Fifty, fifty of your closest friends over.
That's correct. And I know, um, one of the HOAs did send me an article, um, from the, the Patch recently with a, an incident in Germantown, when that exact thing happened. It was unlicensed Airbnb, there was a vacant property, uh, it was off for sale. They rented it out for a night and there was a extremely large party there, uh, that brought a police response.
I've, I've got a couple thoughts that are a little bit all over the place. On, on the issue of the MPDUs, I think it's sort of a no-brainer, the idea of, we don't want people buying these properties as an investment, uh, moving out and turning them into, you know, Airbnb crash pads to make money. On the flip side of that, if I was a family that owned an MPDU, you know, subsidized housing, I had a kid, you know, move out, I had an extra room and had an opportunity to make a little bit of extra money to supplement my income while living there, I'm not sure that's necessarily a bad thing. So, it's sort of a, it's sort of a, there's two sides to every one of these coins and.
Fair point.
I don't know how you enforce it. I guess on, on, on something like that, you gotta sort of pick, pick one side or the other. Because it's sort of impossible, impossible to enforce these gray areas, you know? I, I don't know how you'd write an ordinance around that. You know? Yeah, I mean, my, my gut reaction to the number of complaints, if you've had, you know, three thousand rentals in the city and six complaints, that's like two thousandths of a percent of the rentals resulted in a complaint, which to me is not high enough on its own to say, "Oh, my God, we've got to regulate these things." The idea of clearing up the ordinance to make it clear and understandable where the boundaries are, where it's allowed, where it's not, I think makes sense. But it doesn't sound to me, at least on the face of it, that the problems that we've been seeing, the complaints we've been having rise to the level where it needs to be regulated because of that. That's my, my initial reaction.
That's a fair point. Rob?
The only thing I feel strongly about is what I take a lot of people strongly about is that.
Rob, speak up a little bit.
The MPD program has a specific purpose and I think that, um, allowing subletting or short-term rentals of the properties subverts that purpose. The rest of it is, I'm, I'm willing to hear, um, arguments on any side.
The only question I have, I've got a bunch of pontification, but I got, but my only question is, do, I know there's data constriction, these are not, um, helpful companies, these are, you know, third-party, um, data companies or, um, you know, connection companies. But do we have any idea who this customer is? Or is this a business customer? Is this a short-term? Gathersburg is not a vacation spot, as much as we all love it. But it's, uh, but, but, you know, we have.
Some marrows as it is.
Yeah, but, yeah, we, we have a large business community, innovative business community. And typically when we talk from a planning standpoint about short-term shared housing, it's, it's around some of the innovative, you know, uh, you know, doctor stops in for one week.
Right.
Maybe brings a family with them, doesn't want to stay in an extended stay hotel. You know, it's, it's, um, it's not, Gathersburg isn't, you know, Florida, right? Uh, so it's a slightly different clientele. So if we had some idea of who, who the, the clientele is.
When I was going through the four sites and looking, I was, you know, out of curiosity, reading stuff. I, I think it really runs from soup to nuts. Some of them were people who wanted to visit the nation's capital and wanted to leverage the Mark stations and didn't want to pay DC rates. We did have, you know, people stopping through on business, um, with, you know, wanted to have access to I two seventy. And, and then we had some, you know, just to be candid, that were very shady. It looked like closed-off basements with four cots in there and they were writing them out. So we didn't even know what it was related to. It was stuff that, you know, from a life safety aspect would never fly. So I, I, I can't say, you know, we would all like to think it was visiting doctors going to NIST or MedImmune, but it's not. It's, it's everything. And, and that's why I think the rents go from, you know, two hundred a night for some of the houses and kettles to twenty dollars a night in some of the other neighborhoods, so.
Lloyd?
I was gonna ask a similar question about who's, who's renting these out, but, um, there's also some privacy concerns. And logging in, for instance, when a resident or a, a short-termer goes in, he has to give his address or has to give some information. And that, uh, is there a follow-up with that information? Can we get access to that information, uh, to give us a better sense of what's really going on? Or is it regulated by privacy?
Well, according to.
My understanding is that they will not share that information. The platforms will not.
The platforms won't, but what about the individual, the owner of the, of the property?
They, they are actually required to keep a list, um, uh, the county, through the county's ordinance, a, a list of everyone who occupies the property. So there, there will be.
So therefore we could, we can gain access to that if we regulate it in such a ways?
That's correct. And, you know, they have to be available for inspection as well.
Okay.
So, um, let's see. First of all, going back to Philip's point about, um, somebody that has, is, it's an owner-occupied property, an apartment that has an extra bedroom or a house with an extra bedroom and somebody wants to pick up some extra income. I think that's much less onerous than the potentialities of somebody renting out their whole place. My understanding from, uh, the discussion at the Economic Development Committee meeting was that the vast majority are entire properties being rented out, so, um, and I'll.
Yeah, I haven't seen that. That wasn't what we saw when we were doing our snapshot.
That's what we heard from, I guess that came directly from Airbnb and some of the other folks in the industry, is that people rent a whole house or a whole apartment, not just a bedroom in a place. But I'm not sure if that's, applies to what we've seen in the city. At any rate, my, it's also my understanding that, that some of the, uh, though, that some of the apartment buildings in Old Town that are, um, that are affordable housing, uh, have units that are being used as, uh, as Airbnb-type, uh, rent, short-term rentals. You know, again, I think it's been said by other people here before, but I think that's a kind of an issue. If we're allowing people to get subsidized, uh, financing for purchasing properties and then renting them out at a lower rate, uh, that's not what it's supposed to be all about. To go back to the beginning though, if, if somebody's in an MPDU and they have an extra bedroom and they want to rent out for extra income, and that doesn't push them outside of the income boundaries for having an MPDU, I, I don't really have a lot of heartburn with that. I think the, the, the primary issue that I have here is wanting to make sure that there's some potential for regulation, whether it's a license fee or not, is less of an issue for me because if there's only fifty different units being licensed, being rented out and it's a hundred dollars a year and five thousand dollars isn't gonna make or break the city, probably more of a hassle than it's really worth for an organization this size. But I'd want to make sure that if there's an issue, that we have a way to deal with it. And I think we probably already do, we probably don't need anything extra. But Kevin, you tell me, I mean, if there's, if there's a problem in a unit, there's a complaint, we can go deal with it the way we would with anything else, yes?
Well, if it's an owner-occupied unit, it's a little bit more difficult, um, gaining access to that unit. Obviously, the rental, the long-term rentals here with our inspection program, the owners obtaining a license allows us to perform the inspection, so that's, that, that's easy. But the owner-occupied units would be a little bit more difficult for enforcement purposes. But if we go on Airbnb and as Rob said, there are some, um, photos in there that clearly there's no egress in the, in the rooms that are being advertised, so that they'd be illegal. We could use that information, um, to go to the owners and, and let them know that this is, you know, a violation. And, um, you know, if necessary, and we could get an administrative search warrant to, to, to go in and verify.
So based on what you said, it would seem like some sort of regulatory regimen would be important to, to require. It's difficult to enforce until you have an issue, but I think we should require that any short-term rental comes under the form of some sort of license agreement that enables you to do your job to enforce it without, with a minimum of difficulty.
That'd be ideal.
As we mentioned, one of the guidance points we had requested was sort of following the county model. And one of the good things about the county model was, uh, aside from a license, you know, they basically have to register. So at least we get a sense of where these are, whether our license is good, you know, gets renewed annually or every two years, at least there's something on record that then allows us, you know, this, this modicum of oversight. And then it's also, you know, the carrot and the stick. So if these occur somewhere and we know they didn't register and they didn't license, you know, there is the, then you have the enforcement arm from that standpoint. Again, I think what we all recognize, these aren't going away. We're not saying, you know, to prohibit because that, that would be, you know, a fool's chase at this point because they're gonna continue, especially when there's a hundred and some platforms. I think for us is, it, it's more, how can, if these are going, sort of the stuff Kevin brought up at the very beginning, how can we retain the integrity of the neighborhood? How can we, to the best of our ability, giving, given our limitations, ensure, you know, life safety issues and protective issues? And, and how, how can we work with these internet partners to, to make this successful on all fronts? And I think that's, you know, i- if it is, you know, to what, you know, Commissioner Winborn brought up, if it is sort of following the county model that a house can't have any more than six people total, you know, that, that's a facet we should put in, or, you know, is it our current, you know, two per bedroom? You know, that, that's another limiting factor that sort of takes out some of these concerns, that, you know, all the hypotheticals. If it is, if we do limit it to owner-occupied and the owner must be there, that's gonna pull some other of these, you know, worst-case variables off the shelf. So I, I think that's really sort of the guidance we're, we're trying to seek.
You done?
No, I have one other point that it's not an issue today, but something that I'd be concerned about if this grows, which is people buying houses for a purpose of short-term rentals.
I've already been approached with a phone call related to an empty property in Old Town.
So if it's empty and it stays empty and, you know, there's an issue with empty properties, I have less of an issue than if, what we don't want is a bunch of investors coming in and buying up a bunch of properties and using them as rental and that ma, making them unavailable to people who need a home, a permanent home to live in and driving up prices and things like that. Again, it's not something that we see as an issue today, but that, that sort of thing, not necessarily around short-term rentals, but around properties being bought up by investors.
So maybe that was the reason behind the hundred and twenty days max per year?
Well, the, the county's ordinance, um, protects that because the, it allows, the, um, the owner has to be a primary resident. It has to be the principal residence. So you can only live in the one, the one home.
Okay.
You know, we have a lot of. I want to go to Busai. She's been waiting patiently.
That's fine. Um, you know, I just, I guess I want to, you know, on what Commissioner Busai was saying, um, about, um, I, I, my initial reaction is, um, that with something that it's potentially not becoming a, um, such an issue to not regulate it or over-regulate it. But I do think that safety would be my major concern. And I think that, um, I, I sense that we're all leaning towards a potential, um, re, um, registration and, um, just, um, a requirement, a one-time.
Inspection?
An inspection and that, um, and a permit, basically, that, um, that it's renewed every two years, I, um, or so. In regards to the MPDUs, um, I would like to say that, um, we could potentially choose to regulate the square footage that is, um, allow, the max square footage that is allowable, the percentage of the, um, home area. Uh, because I do agree with Phil that, um, you know, that we shouldn't preclude someone who has a room available from potentially, um, making, um, some.
Extra money.
Extra money from it, um, just because they bought an MPDU and that's what they can afford. And then, um, you know, my reaction is to, um, just create a permit base, um, you know, and just, we have over ninety, um, homeowners' associations. What, would you say, what area of the city falls outside of that, that would have, need the zoning change in order to have?
The neighborhood right behind us. Deer Park neighborhood doesn't have an HOA and there are on the map shown.
So, but the what percentage of the total area of the city?
It's scattered.
So traditional suburban neighborhoods that.
No, and I, I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of how, like, what type of zoning.
We don't have the actual square footage or unit count right now.
I, I'm not asking for you, I just, uh, like, in a sense of what falls outside of the HOA so we get an idea of what, um, impact does a zoning change will have in terms of, you know? Although, otherwise, I would say a permit that gets down, handed out to the HOAs, it should be sufficient, in my personal opinion, but just trying to gauge what the impact would be.
Okay, Lloyd?
Yeah, a quick question. Has there been?
Has there been a cost analysis to municipalities around the size of, let's say, Gatorsburg in terms of police, extra police or inspectors and things like that? What's the cost, what, what could be the cost of us if we do, throwing out a figure, let's say three thousand, you said three thousand possible rentals a year or something? If it goes up because we legalize this, we make it a, you know, make it affordable and so on and so forth, what's the cost to, to the city? Has any, any analysis been done?
Not, no formal analysis been done, but I--
Sorry. Come on, Grandpa.
Might be some third-party organizations that have that kind of information, you know, some nonprofit groups that do this kind of research, think tanks. We might want to look at some of those.
Yeah, I appreciate that because, I mean, a hundred and fifty dollars a year may not be sufficient. We may have to go a little bit higher than that, but, boy, depending on the number of units one has. So I think we've got to look at that.
It's a consideration, for sure.
So, are any of the Gatorsburg properties registered with Montgomery County?
Not that I'm aware of.
And did we find out why Rockville decided not to move forward with regulation or ordinance?
In speaking with them, it's just not a priority. They're viewing it as it's not a problem and they have other initiatives that they're doing. They just got done their zoning rewrite, so they were-- Again, it's sort of almost the line that Commissioner Wessel was bringing up. If, you know, there's not a problem now, they're more reactive than trying to be proactive, whereas, you know, Frederick's walking that balance and Annapolis just wanted to get it out and get it regulated, so.
Do we know when Frederick is, their study is going to be finished?
They're still going through, you know, community group meetings. And I gather just this week, a suit has been brought against the finding by the zoning administrator regarding the legality of these, so it could be a while, especially given the elections. We, we have to see how theirs turns out also.
Okay, Mike.
Well, you know, Neil brought a point about people buying places. You know, we all, we already have a number of townhouses and condo communities where there are absentee owners and they basically have bought those properties for investments and they rent them out on, on a longer-term basis. So, you know, but I think one of the, the things that we've, that might, has probably been seen in, in other parts of the country are that people are buying these now and the intent is not long-term leases, but short-term leases that, that actually ends up generating a much larger income for, for the owners if they don't have to be there and then they can, they can turn that over on a regular basis. So licensing is even more important in that case. You know, and I, you know, the, the other part of the, the hotel tax that we, we tax is that all of those lodging companies, hotels and sites, whatever, they're, they're all subject to our regulation, our inspection, everything else like that. And, and to some extent, this is about safety. And, you know, even for rentals that we allow now and owner-occupied places that, you know, they, to get a license, then they have to, they're subject to our inspection and, you know, we have to make sure it's a safe place and everything else. So I, I think these are, you know, I think it, it pays to be proactive here. You know, I, I'm, you know, at, at the least, we ought to really consider what the county's done and think about how we could adopt that and make it work for us and then with our own changes, make it, you know, more like what we would do here if we had, we're starting from the ground up, so.
Danny.
Oh, I'm good.
Oh, you're good.
Right. I just wanted to ask, it's been about, about a year since the county adopted their ordinance. Do we know how many licenses have been applied for at the county level?
I believe they have fourteen hundred advertised on Airbnb.
Well, fourteen hundred--
Licenses.
Licenses.
I'd have to double-check that figure, but that's, the Airbnb, the county said that they have fourteen hundred advertised rentals on that, on that one platform.
That are licensed.
I'm not sure if they're licensed.
See, that's the question. I'm, I'm sort of not asking how many are advertised, I'm asking how many are licensed and we may not know the answer to that, but I think that would be telling.
You can follow up with us on that one.
That's where we lean on those entities.
I'm ready to pontificate if you want some.
Nobody else has.
Just two quick thoughts, which I think are just an adjustment to what everybody's talking about. On life safety, you know, the, you know, buildings are built certain ways for certain kinds of inhabitants, occupants. And some things are built to a very high standard. Hotels, because it's a transient occupant, because it has, you don't have the, the knowledge of when you're woken up out of your sleep or what's going on, where's the exits, you know, how do you get out of a building and that type of thing. Whereas a, a long-term rental or, you know, your home obviously is much different. A low population of people, low stories, you know, clear path to a right-of-way. All these things that go along with single-family homes or townhomes are much, make them tremendously safer just regardless of what's going on. So we have some, we have some additional considerations when you start saying that we're going to have hotel-like conditions in a multi-family building because apartments are not built to the same standard as hotels.
No, I, I--
Built to a far higher, no, I'm just, I'm giving you a story. I told you. And so that, that apartment building is still built on a much higher standard, obviously, than a townhouse or, and then, which is built to a higher standard than a single-family home. And, and just so as we make these decisions about life safety, I, you know, I don't know that smoke detectors in a big window is all we need to consider if there's going to be a transient population like there would be for a long-term lease in a single-family home, which is how we sort of deal with that from an inspection standpoint. You know, I don't know where that is, but somewhere in there, I think in order to protect people, we do want to make sure that the, the least protected architectural envelope is not, does not have the most dangerous resident or occupant within it, which is what we're talking about, you know, so. And then there's some middle stuff that we then need to fuss with in apartment building. Speaking as sort of an apartment building guy, you know, having a level playing field is what everybody wants, right? Clear understanding, clear definition, and I, you know, we want some, even though it's written into a lease, even though it's in an HOA document, you know, we all want to make it easier. And frankly, local government is, is the closest thing to enforcement that we have. You know, having to go to a court to evict somebody, having to go to, you know, and, you know, go through a litany of proof that you violated a lease, you know, or violated your HOA agreements is a really difficult process. Whereas you don't have a license from the city, you know, you need to stop, is much, much easier. And frankly, quicker enforcement for something that is a safety and nuisance issue. So from a landowner or operator or manager standpoint, or HOA, you know, manager, I think having a clear, definable understanding with a license is a great sort of safe harbor for us to then say, you know, you violated your lease, please kind of have some help with local jurisdictions, so. Those are my other two thoughts.
Excellent pontification.
Rob, did you want to add something?
No, Mr. Mayor, I--
Okay. Well, if everyone's sort of gotten it out for now, let's, let's go to the public. This is the time where the mayor, council, and planning commission like to hear from anybody who'd like to speak on this topic. We ask that you keep your comments to no more than three minutes. When your time's down to thirty seconds, the timer will beep and turn yellow. When it's up, it'll beep and turn red. And we ask that you state your name and address or neighborhood or affiliation for our record. Who'd like to be the first speaker? I know we have some speakers out there. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Matt Howell. I'm a member of the Hidden Creek Homeowners Association Board of Directors, as well as the president of the Hidden Creek Condominium Association. Thank you for hosting this work session tonight to discuss the future of short-term rentals in our city. While I'm in favor of allowing some short-term rentals, I do have some reservations. This is where we all laugh at my wonderful pun. Our neighborhood does have some serious parking issues. One egregious example is lots 110G and 110H where we have eighteen condo units which share five street parking spots. I wish I could say this was an outlier, however, it's not. Every night in our neighborhood, I see one hundred percent of street parking taken up in ninety percent of the neighborhood, the only exception being the single-family home area. I saw in the staff guidance requires one off-street parking space per rental. However, in one case in our neighborhood, there was a short-term rental recently which was rented to a contractor doing a project. And he was using the rental unit as a meeting point where he would have four or five cars show up every day in the neighborhood, park in the morning, they would sit outside, smoke cigarettes, drink coffee, throw their trash in the conservation area, and then go off to their job site every day. We've also seen issues with trash and recycling collections. Another current short-term rental unit leaves their cans out twenty-four seven as the short-term rentals don't know Monday and Wednesday are trash day or Tuesday's recycling day. So the cans are just left out constantly. This now only looks unsightly, on windier days, it throws trash throughout our community and then it also invites the feral deer population closer into the housing areas, which increases the chance of collision with vehicles. A final consideration is our fitness and pool facilities. The numbers in the presentation tonight showed approximately three thousand short-term rentals last year to about fifty units. That's an average of sixty rentals per unit. Looking at the map, I counted about ten dots in our neighborhood, the Hidden Creek Homeowners Association area. If every one of those people used our facilities, that's an extra six hundred people per year traversing through our facilities, which we only have five hundred homeowners, so that's basically doubling the potential count of people using our fitness center, our pools, our shower facilities. This is a hundred percent increase in our maintenance costs, a hundred percent increase in our liability, a hundred percent increase in our utility costs to run our showers. Speaking of liability, what is our liability if a short-term rental was injured in our fitness center or had an accident in our pool? Where does the liability shift from us to a homeowner or even to the city? If something would, if a, if a hotel has a disruptive guest, they can evict that person from the property on the spot, they're done. If a homeowners association were in the same situation, what's our recourse to evict a, a, a short-term resident who's becoming a problem? And I want to address your point, Commissioner Wessel. You said about, there were six complaints, I had about three thousand. I feel like there may be a very low reporting number on that, just because of my neighborhood alone. I don't call you guys all the time, but I could have made probably fifty in the last year. So I just wonder if that six out of three thousand seems really low, but it might be more like twenty percent. So it's really hard to, I think, gauge that number. I do look forward to seeing your recommendations on how to improve short-term rentals and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt. Good comments. I'm sure you guys were taking notes because those are all legitimate concerns. Do we have any other speakers this evening? Going once, going twice? Come on, Maria. Maria is my HOA president.
Let him have it.
Grab the mic. Pull the mic down, yeah, there you go.
I've never used one of these before, so. My name is Maria Cervantes. I'm the president of the Orchard Place Homeowners Association. I've been told that our documents do not allow for these short-term rentals. Nevertheless, very recently, we found out we have four of them going on. And I have spoken to Kevin about that. I would advocate, we would all advocate a stronger presence by the city. We rely on you guys a lot. We've had trash issues, parking issues. There have been complaints about the transient people suddenly showing up. We have a parking problem to start with. And there are some areas of the community where that has just blown up because those rental units are near there. Okay, I should have, I should have written something up, sorry.
You can submit something arriving later, too, if you want, with the details.
The person who was going to speak has had a headache and didn't come. We realized a couple of years ago, we had a very strange renter in the community who was, his landlord was an absentee owner. He took a house, he started bringing in guests daily, and it turned out this was an Airbnb situation, although back then, we didn't even know what that was. He caused tremendous problems in that, that street. He even assaulted a next-door neighbor. And it turned out he was eventually arrested for drug and weapons charges. But that, to me, shows that we have no control over who is coming in. And anything you can do in terms of licensing or fees or inspections, anything like that to give us a helping hand would be much appreciated. And I do want to thank the city and especially Kevin Roman and his staff for being there every time we have needed them. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Going once, going twice? Okay. Well, we appreciate the, the input we got from you guys and anything more from the days before we ask staff the, you know, the key question? Do you feel like you've gotten some guidance to move some direction?
No, I think we'd like a little bit more clarity. I, I think it's safe to say we, we receive guidance to amend something, but exactly what we're amending, I think some of the details that we brought up here, especially in light of the two comments that were made, I think we'd like a little bit more guidance on, on how the council wishes to proceed. Namely, if I have to go, if I'm hearing, you know, if we follow the bullets, allowing all zones with residential uses based upon the conversations and people are from all over the city, I'm thinking, yes, these regulations, we're not going to preclude any particular zone. This is a big one. The only single-family or condominium, are we going to include multi-family rental? I think this is a substantive issue and we would definitely like guidance on this because if we're going to preclude multi-family rental, we need to explicitly state that in any amendment.
Speaking for myself, I think I need a little more information before I can pull the trigger on that one because it is a complicated question. All the various pontifications provided this evening, you know, really shed light on the, the complexity here. I mean, we don't want to, you know, treat any particular group of residents unfairly, but--
That's true.
At the same time, you know, we want to, we want to have that safety. And, you know, particularly with the type of multi-family buildings that are secure entry and you have people coming in and out who might be transient and now they know the code to get in the building and, you know, there are some issues. I personally think, you know, the majority of people who are renting Airbnbs are fine, but, you know, we're not regulating for those folks, we're regulating for the, the problem situations. So I'm not ready to pull the trigger on that yet. I need a little more information on what the pros and cons are and how we might be able to do it in a way that makes sense. That's, that's my position.
I'd recommend to you guys think about separating the, the sort of, the single-family owner property as being an owner-occupied short-term lease, separate from the non-owner-occupied leases that might pertain to other kinds of properties. So from a zoning standpoint, single-family, you know, zones may want some kind of owner-occupied overlay and a, and a restriction or abolition for, you know, non-owner-occupied short-term leases. And, you know, multi-family mixed-use commercial districts may want something that's a little more allowed, you know, allowed. You can, I'm saying you can split it in half, it doesn't have to be--
And I think that's actually the next bullet was whether, seeking guidance, whether we want to limit these to owner-occupied or will we allow these to occur when an owner is absent? Or as Kevin mentioned, which the county allows where it's, for like, I better term the owner's designee. So if somebody's renting a house, do they then have the right to take the house and, and use it for Airbnb, for, for short-term rental purposes?
One last thing is probably alive, but one last thing is, you know, in the multi-family world, the apartment world, you, you don't find a whole lot of operators. In fact, I don't know of any that are, you know, reputable operators that own apartment buildings that, 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 that allow, you know, single unit. What they do is they generally hire a manager that, that has a company that is used to taking large banks, floors, a chunk of those units, if not the whole building, and then running that management piece in a different way. Because it's just a different business model. So they, it's fairly rare that you'll run an apartment building and then rent three to Airbnb. You know, it just doesn't, I've never heard of it actually happening, so. But I think what happens is the tenant who rents that apartment is the one that goes to Airbnb.
Yeah, well, then they're already in violation of the lease because they don't know--
We presume they're in violation, which we don't know if they are.
I know, they are.
Yeah, I can't imagine.
I can't imagine it would be allowed, but the, but the other thing--
And we can't kick them out one day. It takes months, months, months.
And so for, you know, to, with what Ryan said about pulling the trigger, I'm more willing to actually have some idea about how we would do this in multi-family rental than in addition to owner-occupied facilities, just because I think it's easier for us to whittle something down than to go back and try and add something where we haven't had the research. I, I know you guys will come up with, with something that seems appropriate, but, but I think the other part of this is how do we advise HOAs, condo associations, and managers of rental, multi-family rental on what they need to do to modify whatever their policies and agreements are, governing documents are that would allow them to govern or regulate the use of, of these properties for this kind of thing.
If only we had a common ownership commission. If only we had a common ownership commission.
Yeah, only we have that. Anyway, that's where I am, you know, I think...
All right. Where's the rest of the council? Do you guys have any, any policy input here on...
I just want, I mean, there are more questions than answers right now, and it's a very small number of units and a very small number of complaints. Do we need to deal with this right now? I mean, other jurisdictions are still wrestling with this as well. Is this a compelling time to have to deal with this?
If the guidance being received is, you know, more fact-finding, I mean, if, we've been given a lot of questions to explore answers to, we're happy with that. I mean, we didn't come in this evening going, "We're ready to write a tax amendment, and we'll be back to you in a week."
I see this as the beginning of the process.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's what a work session is, it's, you know, we're bouncing around the ideas. I agree with you. I don't think that this is anything that needs to be legislated tomorrow, but I do think, you know...
If we know the end goal is eventually coming up with something, that's fine. So if what I'm hearing right now, the questions we really have to answer is sort of the balance between fee simple, single-family, and multifamily rental. Let's making sure what are the restrictions currently under our affordable housing program? You know, would these, are these uses already precluded through a contractual agreement and not an ordinance? Looking at some more of the details, how is it working at the Montgomery County level right now? What are the problems they're finding a year in? What works, what doesn't work?
And then the cost-benefit analysis for the inspectors and officers.
Fiscal impact analysis, to see if there's been any studies on fiscal impact.
And in the meantime, we can have our lobbyists look at the state regulations and make sure that we're clear to do what we ought to be able to do as well.
And if nothing else, we should be doing, you know, Kevin and I can coordinate doing some outreach to the HOA and condo boards, making them aware of the issue and what rights they do have, even though, as was explained by Commissioner Hopkins, you know, if we do some action that gives them a little extra oomph and certainty.
So you guys didn't look at Ocean City? Right?
They have Ocean Pines.
I mean, it is a whole different thing, you know, this is, it's a, it's a very transient community, but...
We weren't looking, you know, I know, included in the packet was the article from the Furtick News Post, and that's where we got the numbers on ourselves, you know, the three thousand. And I think one of the top ones actually was Ocean Pines. It's right over the Fifty Bridge, and that's more, because it's more single-family homes. We're happy to look into Ocean City to see what...
You know, it's an entirely different environment there, but Ocean Pines is more of a, you know, a year-long residential community, you know, I assume. And so some of the issues there would be more like a suburban community in another part of the state.
So, and I just want to make sure that you guys took the notes on, from the feedback we got from the public tonight about, because we're not, we're obviously not ready to move forward anytime soon with any sort of ordinance, but we should keep in mind parking and neighborhood requirements, you know, making short-term renters aware of what's going, you know, trash day, and rules with the amenity facilities, and think about liability and, you know, what we do or how people would assist with, or get some sort of remedy for disruptive guests. We're not ready, we're not there yet, but these are good topics for the future.
I think, oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
In my mind, you know, I think that the idea of doing a tax amendment is definitely something in the long term, but could we consider potential licensing process to begin developing something along those lines? I think if I listen to everyone in the diet, it's just, in addition to the cost assessment, that would be the one tool that we can give the HOAs, just being, reacting directly to the people who spoke. Could we separate this to...
My two cents on that, it shouldn't be considered, but is it, I'm always concerned about giving a license or a brand of authority and acceptance to somebody that hasn't been enforced by a good, by a good sort of life-safety, you know, protocol?
And I'm agreeing with you. I'm saying, you know, let's look into, separate the two issues and look into the impact analysis and study that, but I think that that could be a potential short-term, shorter-term goal as we consider this issue.
To do that, sort of what Annapolis did, and just to be clear, the only reason they were able to do that is still going to require an ordinance change, because again, these uses are undefined, so there's nothing, so there's no way, there's nothing to license right now. It would be open and ambiguous, so it's still, even in the short term, requires some sort of ordinance change.
I just want to make a quick follow-up comment about what the mayor just said. I do think we got some good comments from the public on things like parking, and trash recycling, and use of amenities in communities like pools and health centers. And that's something that, you know, didn't really necessarily arise in our conversation up here on the day, so it was good to get that feedback and think about those issues. I think one place to look, which I'm sure staff has probably already started at least a little bit to look, but might help shed some light on this, is, you know, what are the standard terms of use of a lot of these platforms? And, you know, you know, I've, I've done a short-term rental before while traveling, and I know that I was given, you know, a long laundry list of things that I was allowed to do and not allowed to do, and, you know, from the legal perspective, you know, does that cover all the bases? So, you know, I'm sure the platform providers like Airbnb want to make sure their end is covered, and I'm sure the owners want to make sure to, within a reasonable extent, their end is covered. So, you know, at some point, you know, while it may not be convenient to have, you know, a short-term renter, you know, using an amenity at a community, as long as, you know, all of the terms of use are there, and the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, if anything happens, it's not the community that's liable, it's not the city that's liable, it's not the, it may be the owner, but it's probably sometimes not the owner that's liable either. So I think we need to maybe look at what the templates are out there and see if that sheds a little light on this question. And then again, of course, it all comes back to, if you're in an HOA, or if you're in a community that has documents and policies that regulate use of amenities, and somebody's violating that use, you know, those documents will guide who's at fault.
And just on the larger platform, Airbnb, they do offer a insurance policy to the host, and it is extended to the HOA if an individual that was a guest there got hurt under certain conditions.
Well, that's interesting.
So that's built in with the rentals.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. Thank you all very much. We, the, oh, Phil, do you have something?
I was just going to say that, you know, the, my key takeaway of everything I've heard here, and frankly, I did not think about the apartment owner enforcement or HOA enforcement until we had the discussion tonight, but I think really is looking at ways to craft the most minimal amount of regulation possible that still, that still gives owners a tool for enforcement that still, you know, backs up the HOAs, and gives them a clear way to say, no, you know, we don't approve this license. I think, I think we should be looking at, you know, minimal amount of regulation possible to allow this to continue to flourish, while still giving the city, neighborhoods, and property owners the tools. That was my two cents takeaway from it.
Okay. All right. Well, again, thank you. Thank you. And join us next week for a regular meeting of the mayor and city council, Monday, October 1st. Until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.